Inette Lucas, followed by Dave Leisneek, followed by Linda Adrian.
Mayor Keller, City Council. First, I'd like to really thank the last two speakers. They did an eloquent job. I'm here tonight as a member of the Santa Clarita Neighborhood Coalition, and I'm here to support the Benz Road homeowners. Yes, I lived through the Hatfield and the McCoys and the Valley and Cowgrove issue, and the council saw the wisdom in closing the road to protect the residents of Valley Street. The Hidden Valley residents were forced to use Wiley to Lyons and back up to Peachland to take their elementary children to school. Still, the closing of the road was the solution. We've all healed now, and we all live in harmony. Now it's your duty to protect the residents and use the diverter. Again, I'm here to support the homeowners of Benz and not to cause problems in our community, and not cause problems for the council, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Inette. Dave Leisneek?
Good evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. This is a complicated issue, as everybody has said. There isn't a clear-cut answer for it that will work for everybody, and I really appreciate the way that the city came on out and talked with us to try and figure out and think outside the box of a reasonable solution that will work best for everyone, and I really appreciate that. You know, this is a complicated issue. I am the Neighborhood Watch captain on our block, and I've seen a lot of issues going on that I'm involved with the Sheriff's Department and trying to help out. And one of the things that I see as being an additional problem here is the physics behind it. And I think if you've driven Copper Hill and you've accelerated at 45 miles an hour, 50 miles an hour, and you hang a right-hand turn from Copper Hill onto Benz, the first thing you do instinctively is accelerate. And when that hill comes down, you know, you're going too fast to be able to stop. There's that stop sign right there. And I think one of the first keys that we have to really address is how to slow down that traffic and create safety on Benz, on Alaminos, for all of the residents, because it is primarily a safety issue. If it was one car an hour or 100 cars an hour, we've got to be safe. It doesn't matter too much more than creating safety for us, the residents, and our children. I was in front of Tony's house one day, and just as a joke, I looked at my wife as I was crossing the street, and I said, "Watch, I'm gonna get hit." And I turned around, and sure enough, somebody came blasting straight on through. They were diverted. They weren't thinking, and they were going too fast, and ran right through the stop sign. So it's a very, very real issue. I will say that my opinions changed a little bit since the October fires, because I live on Dan Court, and I have a hill behind us and a hill on the other side of Boquet. And we were really concerned about evacuating the neighborhood. I had a brother that lives not far, and there was one access road out. And as I look now at the problem and think, if you put a barricade there, it's not a matter of if we have another fire, it's a matter of when. Limiting the exposure to a major road and diverting traffic through Alaminos or however is not going to really work, I think, to create a safety issue for anybody. Of all of the choices that was presented a couple nights or a couple weeks ago, the speed bump was by far the one that met at least a temporary solution to try and to assess it and come back and then review and see how it goes. I am in favor of that. I ask for you to consider that at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Linda Adrian, and then our last speaker will be Robert English.
Mr. Mayor and Council for hearing us this evening. Thank you for your -- what seems like patience and yet to us is not seven years. It's entirely too long. All I'm hoping is that the Historical Society, that we don't have to wait 20 years, as they've had to wait, to be heard and action to be taken. I lived on Benz Road for 22 years. I no longer allow -- I have a granddaughter, and I've had lots of children in my home. I no longer allow them to play out in front, because it is not a safe thing to do. As far as access in fires and things of that nature with a fire that we did have, most of the traffic in that area, as you know, if you've had any kind of fire, any other kind of devastation in your area, flood, flood, flood or earthquake, it's the looky-looers. It's the people that come to do that. Besides that, there are engineers that can engineer things that will work in those cases. Mostly what I hear tonight from us is that we would like you to simply do what is right, and we would like you to do what you said you would do. We would like to believe in you. We would like to believe that you are hearing us. We would like to believe that 26 people do count, and it's not just 26 people, but Mr. Jacobson, for instance, who doesn't live on Benz is in agreement with the diverters, as other people who do not live there. And why in the world would we expect that 500 people would want it to change? Because if it changes, they cannot cut through. So those people certainly would not want any change, because then they cannot cut through that area. David Street is a street that was managed so that people can use and make good access by going to David. That's the access that was there before Boquet Canyon, before Copper Hill was actually accessed from Benz. So all they have to do is go back to using David Court and down Boquet, where there is a signal, where it's safe, where it's better for them to access school traffic and cut-through traffic. We just ask you to please listen to what's been said tonight, hear us, and not just for our sake, but if it moved to your neighborhood, if it moved to any other street, those people would also want you to do something about it. So it doesn't matter that it's Benz. It matters that it's happening, and it matters that it could happen elsewhere. And we ask you to hear us. We ask you to do something about it, as you said you would do, and be faithful to that, either the Phase Two or the diverter, and we thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. English?
Good evening, and thank you for listening to my few comments that I'm going to make. Forty-year resident of Alaminos Drive, I live just down the street from where Benz is at. Since they put in the restrictions, turn restrictions, the traffic increase on Alaminos is terrible. It takes me 20 minutes to get out of my driveway when those traffic restrictions are on. I'm not saying Benz has a bad, but it's terrible, my street, during those traffic times. As far as I'm concerned, all traffic restrictions should be taken out. The stop signs should be taken out. When Benz was being built, Copper Hill was there. It was Wells built where Copper Hill was going to be. So, I mean, it was brought up, do no harm, take it back, put it back like it was. Well, maybe the thing to do is to turn off, cut, block off Copper Hill at both ends until you realign Boquet Canyon. But that's not feasible because of everything else built. Speed bumps is a good way to go. I also ask you to extend those speed bumps further down than what that small section of Alaminos are. Bring them down Copper Hill, I'm sorry, bring them down Alaminos to where Welston is, where the school is, so that people don't pick up the speed after that. The school traffic, if you divert off at Benz, everybody's going to come out to Boquet Canyon Road, come back in on Benz, down Alaminos. Boquet Canyon is supposed to be a walk-in school. Everybody's driving to it. So you're not going to cut down any traffic coming down Alaminos by putting in a diverter. You're going to, again, increase it. So please, do away with what's there. Put in the speed bumps as what was talked about at the last meeting, at the town hall meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I might add, we've got a total of about, let's see here, 40 cards, 40 comment cards, okay? Two of them are from people that live in the area. The rest live in Canyon Country and other areas. And the ones that live on Benz Road oppose the recommendation. Road closure is requested. Strike that. I had one resident that was on it. Two. No, I'm right. And I've lived at the Alaminos address for about eight years now. Alaminos is always busy in the mornings. And they oppose the recommendation. Said it before, say it again. Listen to yourselves, and I mean that with great respect, ladies and gentlemen. And I know it's been a long time in coming to some kind of a conclusion for this thing, but I tell you, the city has staff, has your council, has -- we've been trying to find the silver bullet, if you will, for all of you, and it's never going to exist. I'm convinced of that. There is not an answer here that is going to keep everybody in your community happy. I just, I put that caveat out there. I appreciate your respect for one another and listening to one another. Clearly, we've got a lot of diversity of opinion, but nevertheless, you handle yourselves true, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much. Ken, would you like to make follow-up comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Generally speaking, I think what you heard tonight is what we heard at the meeting. There are differences of opinion, and there are different solutions that fit different needs. And that's kind of how we landed on the solution that we came up with. We know not everybody likes it. We don't know if it's the best solution, which is why we have a pilot project. Are speed humps the solution? Are they the most effective? Quite honestly, I don't know. We don't know. The best-case scenario for us and the traffic engineers would be able to model all of these scenarios based on, if we put in a diverter, where the car is going to go. If we put in the speed humps, is it going to affect cut-through? Is it going to slow people down? And have some traffic model that shows us that. Unfortunately, that technology doesn't exist. There's way too many assumptions that go into driving behavior, and where people are coming from, and where they're going, and so forth. So as we look at these solutions, we're kind of estimating. It's not a science. It's an estimate. We're trying to come up with a solution that we think will work. We've seen a pilot project that has worked. The issue of cut-through, the issue of speed, was an issue with Old Orchard One. They're not here anymore. So it was an effective solution. It certainly was for that community. Is it going to be as effective for Benz? I don't know. But that is why we're talking about doing a pilot program. If it works, great. If it doesn't, then we're back. But I do want to put a few other clarifiers out there. On the diverter, you heard a concern with Alaminos. That's a concern for us as well. That certainly will, as you look at reducing cut-through traffic, that is about 30% of what we're trying to deal with. There is another 70% of internal traffic that we're also dealing with. So as you look at diverting traffic, you're more than diverting the cut-through traffic. You're also diverting the internal traffic that flows within that neighborhood, which is 70% of it. So Alaminos will bear a greater load than what it does now. Is that right? Is that wrong? I don't know. But it is certainly a concern that we have to acknowledge. The other thing I want to clarify, and then that'll conclude my comments, is the issue of the implementation of Phase Two. Phase Two was always a match, a pair, that the Phase Two restrictions would be at both Canterwood or Buckhorn as well as Benz. And it was always on the condition that the County of Los Angeles would agree to implement the same solution. Now, if, it's not up there now, but if you look at the map, right now, if the council were to say, "Go implement Phase Two," we don't have county concurrence. So we would be looking at doing half of Phase Two, which is creating a concrete turn restriction at the top of Benz Road. So what does that do? In our minds, what that potentially does, and again, we don't know, but we're guessing at this, is that you divert all of that traffic to Canterwood. So now, instead of Benz Road driving the issue, Canterwood is here driving the issue. So again, as we look at solutions, we're trying not to come up with something that just creates another issue someplace else. The county has expressed concerns in terms of the impact it has to the county residents there on Buckhorn. And they basically said their position at the meeting has been that, you know, if you want to do Phase Two, you can do Phase Two on your side. We'll monitor it, and we'll look at it as time goes on. But we do not have a commitment at this time from the county to do a full Phase Two implementation. So again, that's another reason why, is we're looking at the recommendation that we've put forward. Those considerations have been discussed, and that's why we're with the solution that we've come up with.
Thank you, Ken. When I listen to have my councilor make their comments, I want to make one, though. There was one note that I put down that I'm going to jump out there with, and I agree with everybody that came forward. You did not cause this problem. You should darn well not have to pay any money to resolve it. I have absolutely no issue. I can agree with you 100% on that, I'll tell you. And I've got some other thoughts, but the protocol is, is that the mayor goes last, and I think that's a fairly responsible thing. So you want to jump out there?
Mayor, can I?
All right, Marcia.
I do. I really want to jump out here. We need to really give this neighborhood back to the residents, and I also agree, they should not be made to pay for a problem that's not theirs. The council has a policy against speed humps, and I adhere to that policy. The Fire Department is opposed as well. I have maybe a solution that might be too simple, but I would propose that you put a gate at Benz and Copper Hill and to allow only the residents to come in, and a gate at Canterwood Drive so that they can't go up to Buckhorn and come down that way, Canterwood and Benz, that only residents can use. You're not then putting traffic on another street by diverting. You cannot then go up to Benz Road, because like Placerita Canyon, there will be a big sign saying, "Not a Through Road," and the same thing at Buckhorn. You need to say, "Not a Through Road" to Benz. To me, that's the cheapest way to do it. If you wanted to experiment with something, experiment with that. It won't cost an arm and a leg. It will give the neighborhood back to the residents, and I think it should solve the problem.
Carl?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. With all due respect to your suggestion, it is not consistent with the vehicle code. Vehicle codes at Section 21101 says, "Local authorities may not place gates or other selective devices on any street which deny or restrict the access of certain members of the public to the street while permitting others unrestricted access to the street." So what you propose is in conflict with the limit.
How in the world, then, do we have gated communities?
That's only on private property.
I'm sorry, what?
That's only on private property that can be done, not on public streets. It can't be done.
The streets, the streets that we're referring to that have gates are all privately owned and not maintained by public, city, county, or--
Well, darn, I thought that was a perfect solution.
Maybe we should start having a lot more neighborhoods with private streets.
Go ahead, Marcia.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'd, speed humps are out for me. I would not vote for them, and I would not absolutely make the residents pay. So that's not an option for me. Then you've got the diverter, which is going to possibly put too much traffic onto Alaminos. They've already got too much. So I don't know that that's a solution either.
Let's hear from my other council members, see what--
Yeah, let's go ahead.
What's going next? Laurie?
Ken, can I ask you to put the map back up? I wish that I'd had it in front of me, and I've been to the neighborhood so many times, but some of the side-street names I'm not sure about. Okay, so if the diverter was in place, where would, okay, people who are above the diverter and have children who attend Boquet Canyon Elementary School, how do they get there? Do they have to go, I mean, how do they get out to then?
You want a kid, or you want Andrew Yee?
I'm--
Boy, it's Boquet, right?
Ladies and gentlemen, we've had the public participation portion now. Thank you.
But I mean, so how are they getting out to Boquet? They're coming down Benz and then going up, I assume that's Alaminos? No, what it--
Yeah, Alaminos, back out to Boquet, so they've got to be--
And then what's the street where they come out to Boquet? Is that David?
Oh, Hob Avenue.
Okay, so they have to come all the way down and then come back in, and do they come back in Benz?
Back in through Benz, back in through Benz, and then through Alaminos.
Okay, okay, that was one of my questions. A couple things. I think it was Valerie Thomas had a great, great quote, and it's one I've been thinking through this whole thing, the concept of first do no harm. And then when I go back to what Mr. Young said, that the diverter is an equal opportunity inconveniencer, that's not a win-win, that's a lose-lose, in my opinion. I mean, if we're first do no harm, we're just sort of spreading the misery. And to me, that's doing harm to people. It's just spreading that. And so I'm having a hard time with that one. I also would like to address Mr. Smith and Mr. Boydston in your comments about my campaign. Actually, never did campaign regarding cut-throughs. Nothing came from my campaign with that regard. I never spoke about it, so you may have seen something that came from another source. It was not from me. Having said that, I think the whole concept of cut-throughs is so aggravating for the residents, and I feel your pain. I totally understand. I think we have to separate the issue of what is cut-through from people who are just using it to get from Copper Hill to Boquet, and what is neighborhood traffic. And if 70% of the traffic in there is neighborhood traffic, I think we have to look at, you know, is what we're doing in the best interest of those 70% of the people who are using that road because it's a public road. So I'm conflicted about that. And then, Marcia, just with all due respect, because it's come up to me before I've heard it say that the city council does not support or is not in favor of, does whatever, not speed humps. Nobody's asked me until tonight how I feel about speed humps. So being one part of this, I will tell you, I think it sounds like a pretty good option.
It was what we passed before you got on here.
I know. It was a past thing. I understand that, but you know--
So it was before you.
Okay, but stuff changes, and this is a big thing. Now, Ken, the temporary speed humps are removable and reusable, I'm assuming.
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Andrew. I don't think I was very clear with that. The idea of the temporary cushions is for the pilot program. They are removable, and they could be used in other pilot programs should the council choose to consider that.
Okay.
So the idea of having temporary is so if the neighborhood, for some reason it doesn't work, they can be taken out with little effort and it be put back to how it was.
Okay. You know, this is, this is not easy. There's nothing that's going to satisfy everybody. Spreading the misery, I'm just not in favor of that. And I know that neighborhood well from going in and out of the school, actually both schools, because there's another elementary school down there. And I think that we're creating a bigger problem by putting a diverter in there. I think that the idea of a trial is an excellent idea, and Mayor, I want to thank you for saying about having the residents pay for it. I certainly hope we can come up with a better option than that, when and if the time comes. I hate the idea of delaying this. The idea of going through a trial means that all of you are going to have to do this again in six months, and that just breaks my heart, because I know you've been through a lot already. And I would love it if we could walk away from here tonight with just a solution, something that we can live with. I think that, based on all the work that you have done, and I know we've all received letters and emails and phone calls, people stop me when I see them, based on all the work that the staff has done, I think that our best option is to go with this trial, to go with the recommendation, and talk again in six months and see how it looks.
Thank you, Laurie. Bring--
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think the biggest thing is that we have to make streets safe, and the entire area there has been impacted by traffic. The county has not completed Copper Hill, and I don't know when that's going to be completed. But in the meantime, we've got to figure out a way to make it safer. And I am concerned that some of the neighbors talked about, they didn't think the city staff had gone far enough. If they were going to do speed humps, they're still concerned about speed down their way because of some of the schools, and they didn't think that it was far enough. And truly, a lot of the, 70% is a huge number, that traffic is generated within the neighborhood, but there is cut-through traffic, and people cut-through, and they speed. And if I was a parent with young children, even with older children, the last thing you want is your child out there with somebody speeding down your street. And so we've got to control the speed. You've got to bring it, you've got to bring it down. The diverter sounds like a simple idea, but it's going to, just like cutting off Benz, if the county says they're not cooperating with that, which is what they have said so far, then you just move the traffic onto the street next door, and then it comes back through, cutting through the other way. So you haven't solved anything. So I think you have to look at the neighborhood comprehensively, and you've got to, I don't know if the turn restrictions really have worked or if they haven't worked. I didn't get a sense of that. Some people were saying that it had caused more problem on their street. So I'm not, I think that does require another look at it. But the one thing that's very, very interesting about driving with speeding, we've seen it with the red light cameras. When there's an instantaneous action, people tend to pay attention to that. And the speed humps are instantaneous. And if there's enough of them, and it's a large enough radius of a neighborhood that you can't be cutting around through another street and then speeding, because, you know, there's a way to get around it, then it can work. But it has to be a whole neighborhood, and I believe that you've got to bring the speed down. And I don't know about additional stop signs. And we're constrained by law. We have to have certain criteria to put stop signs in, but it's something we should continuously look at, because there has been increased volumes of traffic, and we need to continue to monitor, because there may be need for more stop signs. I tend to agree with the mayor and my fellow councilmembers. I think there's going to be a lot of people in the future that are going to want speed humps in their neighborhood, because they do offer an instantaneous response to speeding. And I think that a lot of neighborhoods that have not had something put upon them, like Benz's neighborhood has, there should be criteria for how they deal with it and how it's paid for. In this case, I'm concerned these people have gone through a lot, and I can't, I can't really say, staff, that, you know, it's impossible to say, "Okay, yeah, you've had this happen to you. Now you need to pay for it." I'm sorry, I just can't do it. But I do believe we have to, we have to go through the trial, because nobody has a crystal ball, and the only way you're going to know if it's going to work is to try it. And the staff is wanting to use something that's reusable, because we know we're going to face this in other areas. And I just want to reiterate that people keep bringing up Placerita Canyon Road. The portion of Placerita Canyon Road that was closed was owned by 180 different homeowners. It was never owned by the public. It was not under the guidelines of the vehicle code, and it was under completely just different criteria, and it was not insured by the public. So if there was an accident, the homeowners were sued. So that is an entirely different issue. I have the greatest empathy for this neighborhood. I can't even imagine what they've gone through. And I've gone up there, and I've looked, and I don't want to sit through a situation where we've just pushed it to a different street, to a different street, to a different street. We need a comprehensive approach that helps all the streets. It's not going to be perfect. It will never be perfect, but there has to be an approach that says, "We've got to control the speeding." And controlling speeding may not stop people from cutting through, but it certainly doesn't make it easy, and it's like to back that up with additional ticketing. And I'd like to make sure that you're continuing to monitor stop signs, and I'd like you to evaluate whether your turns work. And I do have a question about that median along Copper Hill. What about when the county puts in another however many hundred homes up there? Well, in that case, you know, isn't there a need to look at that? Isn't that median going to be needed? Because you put another 500 and some homes up there, you've just exacerbated the problem for this entire area, and it's got to be dealt with. And I think you need to deal with it right now. I can't see people staying up till 11 o'clock at night and keep coming back down here to say the same things, because we know what the issues are. We've got smart people in neighborhoods. We've got smart staff. We need to get busy, and we need to do this right. So those are my comments. I think you're going to-- I think you're going to have to do this. Staff, I think you've missed the extension of this. There might be a little farther on some of these streets you need to go to really solve it. But you need to do that right now, because I don't want to see another 30 homes at the end of a street come back and say, yeah, they get to my portion, there's no speed cushions, and they're just flying down my street. You don't want that, especially in areas where there's schools. It is the worst possible scenario. Everybody's in the hurry in the morning, they're hurry at night. Slow them down. And I was very pleased to see the fire department send a letter that said, you know, we don't like it, we don't want it, but you've got to do what you've got to do as a city. And the speed cushions, which don't affect the fire engines in the same way, was something that they could live with. So I was very pleased to see that.
Which letter did you read? I missed, I'm sorry, but which letter did you read saying that they said it's okay?
Well, they didn't say it was okay. They said that they could live with it.
It just says it's the least destructive of the three, but they're opposed to it.
Well, it's the least destructive of the three, and they show a nice big picture here with their fire department truck wheels being able to get through, because the way the speed cushion is designed is different. So I took that as somewhat of a support. But we're out of options. We are out of options. We have a neighborhood with a lot of streets, a lot of people, and they need us to do something, and they need something that's comprehensive throughout their area. I don't know what else to do but to try this, and to make it comprehensive enough, and back it up with law enforcement to try to bring this to a neighborhood that feels safe again. And we did see it work in another neighborhood. Don't know if it'll work in this one, but I'm hoping it's going to really help a lot.
My turn. And thank you for addressing the Placerita Canyon issue, because I knew that that wasn't hardly a parallel to what we were experiencing with this one. Having said that, it's good to know that the council has a variety of thoughts as well on this matter. I see it as a diverter and some appropriately placed speed humps, probably less than what is being proposed. We have tried a number of things, all with the best of intention of trying to handle this matter. I think that the diverter is a responsible course of action, based upon all of the experience and what has occurred thus far. And I think it ought to be still brought back to us, though, to make sure we're trying to optimize the outcome here. If I were to get my way on this matter, we would have a diverter in it, like I said, some speed humps in some adjacent streets that make sense, based upon all of the information and studies that we presently have. And we'd certainly have an opportunity to see what the numbers looked like in the imposition to the community that's there, that we can look at in six months. And I think we should be able to, at that time, say, yes, this was a good solution, or we've got to go back and try a little something different. But that would be my recommendation on this matter, if I had my way. Other comments, councilmembers? Marcia, you?
I would, rather than the speed humps, I would go with the diverter as well. But I, but, I don't know, maybe we should just close the street?
Well, I think we've already heard that, Seale Diggle.
I know, but what I'm wondering is, is we don't have an option to close the street either. Is that true? According to what you said, or is it just we don't have the option for the gate, because then it's restricting it to some people and not to others? Is that correct?
That is correct. The letter is correct. You can close a street if you find that there is a public need, a public safety need to do so.
Well, let's close the street.
Well, let me, let me just ask a question about that. So then the next street over comes in and says, you've now closed that street? And... I think everybody should just stay home and never go anywhere.
I think the diverter is the most responsible way to go for the interests of the entire neighborhood.
Well, let me ask staff about the diverter. The diverter is something that we have already heard from all the rest of the area, that they don't want it. Is that correct? Or did I misunderstand?
Well, I mean, it depends on where you live. I think the council's having the same discussion as the neighborhood. If you listen to people who actually live in the neighborhood, nine people that talk don't live in the area. Eight people live on bends. They pretty much don't want speed humps, they want diverters. Everybody else that doesn't live on bends, by and large, wants speed humps and no diverters. The council, you know, you've got one doesn't like diverters, one that...
Oh, we got that part figured out.
You got that part, okay. It somewhat mirrors that. One thing you could do, and I hate to throw out a whole new idea here at 11 o'clock at night, is try the speed hump thing that Ken Striplin described earlier, and try the diverter for a few months, too. Try them all, come back at the end of nine months, talk to the neighborhood, and see what, how they liked it. The gentleman that said putting in a diverter on a temporary basis is pretty cheap, I would agree with that. I would think we could stick some K-rail out there for a few months and see what everybody thinks.
Are you talking about, Mr. Paul Skam, about doing them both at the same time?
No. No, try everything different. You know, you do the speed humps with the turn restrictions, speed humps without the turn restrictions, you do the diverter all separately, and give everybody an opportunity for a few months to try something.
So like, three months for each thing?
Three months for each, right.
I think it would only be accurate if it was all done within the school year.
I think that's good.
Because that impacts tremendously the neighborhood traffic.
I would agree with that. And then go back out, we could either survey the community, we could go back and talk to the community, and after everybody's looked at this, see what we have, and then come back here and stay till 11 o'clock.
Better make those signs easy to stick in and out. Excuse me, isn't the diverter the least expensive thing?
I would say yes.
I would say try that first. And then, and then, and then see how the rest of the neighborhood feels about that. If you've gotten tons of traffic on Alaminos, then we know that that's, I mean, more than it's necessary, we know that that's not going to work. If you do the speed humps first, it's more expensive, and it impacts a whole lot more people.
You know, if I may say, I agree with you, Marcia, on that. I think the diverter is a good way to go. I honestly think, guys, that it's going to really stop the cut-through traffic huge. And I think subsequently, there's going to be minimal going over to Alaminos. And going down from Buckhorn is such a long circuitous route, I really can't see people, I mean, we won't say 100%, but I can't imagine people wanting to use that course, when you consider how you'd have to go to get through there. I think the diverter would be an appropriate first line, and let's test the results. Go ahead, Carl.
Another option you might want to consider is the diverter and the speed humps along Alaminos, is it? That combination might discourage enough drivers from going that route, and, you know, be some protection for both.
Well, and that's why I said, I don't want to take away from the, what would otherwise be responsible results from doing a study, if you will. But frankly, I think the combination of the two is probably a responsible way to go, but I will certainly bow to the wisdom of my fellow councilmembers.
Is the city manager comfortable with that, with doing that in combination? I mean, I don't know which streets are most affected, but I know Alaminos has traffic problems, no matter what. They had traffic problems of speeding way before Benz was open.
So were you, were you suggesting just the diverter and then the speed humps on Alaminos?
Well, I, in a way, I would like to give Andrew Yee and his staff an opportunity to review. I know they had a number of them that they came up with on the screen there. I'm confident that with the diverter, probably well over half of those could be probably eliminated. But I dare say, in listening to the discussions of the citizens, there's a number of streets around there, perhaps even a couple remaining on bends, that would be appropriate, and a couple of adjacent streets. Certainly, Alaminos would probably call for a couple in strategically located places. And we use our best judgment and see if we haven't got a combination here that gets some meaningful results for these people.
Mayor, I'm not sure I get this. Are you talking about one option or four options at this point? You saying just do the diverter and humps? Or try it with these other ones?
I'm trying to be, it's getting late. No, the diverter and our traffic, they evaluate putting in some speed humps in other areas immediately around there. I just, I'm surmising that with the diverter, we would not need, what was the number that you originally indicated, Ken?
Between, up to 20 to 30, up to 30.
Well, and chances are, I mean, I'm thinking maybe it would be 15 or something. I'll let the engineers, they've got all of the wisdom and have the ability to make those evaluations and what the public has indicated. Something less, I'm sure, than what was otherwise indicated, but a combination of those. But I would think that we would get some meaningful results by implementing that program. And if it doesn't work, ladies and gentlemen, we'll come back and we'll hammer it some more. But at least I think this would have some meaningful course of action.
Mayor, isn't, isn't, Mayor, isn't one of the more critical things here to give staff the tools to go do something that is going to effectively restrict the other streets from having a problem? So the diverter, fine. The diverter's going to divert traffic to those other streets, we know that. So if staff looks at it and says, okay, it's going to get diverted here and there, they're going to figure out how many speed humps they need and what streets. I mean, I don't know the answer to that, but I think leaving them have the latitude to do whatever number they need to do is the appropriate way to deal with it. Because you don't, I don't want to see people coming back in and saying, now you've done this, and now it's my streets impacted. Let staff go out and do it, and...
Well, I think that's what I said. I said I bow to their wisdom. I surmise it might be less, I didn't say it will be less.
But it may not be. You know, the only thing that I would add, and not that this can possibly be scientific, I'm sorry, Andrew Yee, but there's, it's not all scientific with traffic, but I think that, in fairness, it should be three months of each separate, and not combining them. And then that way, after nine months, where you can have data, looking at just the diverter, just the humps with the restrictions, and just the humps without restrictions, that's where we go back and look and say, was one of them far and away better than the rest? Or will a combination work? But I don't, I don't think we start with the combination, because we haven't been able to look at, you know, the different elements. So, I mean, a three-month time period is not long, you know, to look at it, and it's, obviously, we need the partnership with the community to get the response from the people who live there, you know, what's working for them, to get the response from the sheriff's department, you know, what they're finding, and to have our traffic engineers have an opportunity to monitor things. So I, I think if we're going to try the diverter, I think it should be by itself.
Stand alone, huh?
For three months, and then after that, you come back and take a look at it, and then if that kind of works, or you know where it's putting, then you talk about, well, I don't know if I would ever talk about speed humps, but still.
Well, let me ask you a question. The diverter's in, and one month later, you've got a whole council room full of people, and they're saying, our streets are just, just jammed. Has staff got the latitude to go out before three months and put in whatever they need to put in?
You had to add that one, didn't you?
Well, I have to ask the question, because we already know that there's going to be a result. You can't change one thing and not have other issues occur. It just doesn't work that way.
It's going to take time for people to understand that if they come down and they go on Alaminos, they've got a really long drive around, and then they're not going to do it anymore. So...
Nice thought.
At first, at first, it may be a problem, but then it may subside, you know, with, with a little bit of time.
I think we ought to stick to the three-month period. I have no problem going with what Lori suggests. I'm comfortable with that. I like the combination better, but I think the diverter's the best move forward for the community.
I like the combination better, myself, but whatever the council wants to do.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we start with the diverter, since it's the least expensive, and see how it works for three months. And then we can take a look after that to see if we want to do a combination, or do we want to do the speed humps in the whole neighborhood? But I think each one should be three months, so that, so that we can take a look. And I know it's not going to make everyone happy at first, but maybe it'll work, you don't know.
So we've got a motion for a diverter only. Do you have a second?
I have a couple other questions. Staff brought you a lot of really good information that you're going to probably need in other neighborhoods. Are we...
Let's not get into another neighborhood tonight, please?
I'm not getting into another neighborhood, but, but these issues are out there, and people are struggling with the impacts to their areas. And we've brought up diverters, and we've brought up, which I think is quite brilliant, that you figured that out, I would have never thought of that. And you've brought up the speed cushions, which is something I'd never seen before. And is that, are those tools that we, as a council, are putting back in the staff's toolbox to work with the neighborhoods that have problems?
Mayor, just to make sure I understand, if what I hear is correct, we will come back to the council more or less nine or 10 months after we've tried three different options?
No, I think we'll look forward to a response in three months as to how the diverter has worked.
We will give you that, but it will not be agendized? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if the community had overwhelming support of it in three months, I hate to just pull it out of, from under them and say, okay, now we're going to speed humps. I mean, what, maybe, you know, I mean, I think, I think we ought to, if we can do this for three months, I think at least we ought to get some input from the community, by means of a neighborhood meeting or, or something. I hate to just sit there and say, okay, now it's out of there, now we're going to speed humps. I just, I think we ought to make that evaluation in three months, at least. We very well made do exactly what you're saying, but I think we ought to get the input of the community.
Good.
I know you hate to have to do this again, but...
No, no, I don't hate having to do that at all. I'm just trying to figure what that looks like. Do you want us to do a survey? You want us to go back and on to community meeting? You want to have it agendized?
I think after the end of three months, you need to come back, and if we need to listen to the neighborhood again, we need to listen to the neighborhood again.
That's my point, then what's being decided tonight is we're doing a diverter and coming back to council in three months.
Yeah, and you're going to do your studies and take a look at the count and the impacts to the community, and...
Good, certainly.
So are we only talking about the diverter, or you're giving staff latitude to also do a three-month study with speed humps?
No, I think we're, my motion is, is that we start with the diverter for three months. At the end of three months, we evaluate that, and then decide if that's not working, then we go on to something else. I don't think we set anything else right now. So that was my motion, is that we start with the diverter to see how it works, and in three months' time, we come back and look at it as a council, and decide if we're going to try something else. Hope, maybe this will work, maybe everybody will love it.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Just for clarification, and I certainly don't want to throw another, staff's recommendation in terms of, if this is the council's direction, that as part of the diverter, the first three months, that, do you have a direction on the turn restrictions that currently exist?
How many more turn restrictions can you have?
No, not adding, taking away.
I would say, in order to get a good feel for this, I say, take them out.
Okay, that's all I needed.
So far, we've got a motion without a second.
Can I ask one more question before? Is the diverter, whatever material, K-something, whatever that was?
K-rail.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Is that movable? I mean, we're talking about fire department, fire department, wherever Lucas, so if they need to get through, they can move that?
They can go around.
They can go, what, on someone's yard? I mean, how do you go around that? Okay.
I think we probably ought to ask the fire chief that question, so we get a real answer on that. Is he here?
See, aren't you glad you stayed?
They've got a forklift apparatus in the front of those fire trucks, you didn't know that?
Chief, the question is if a big chunk of K-rail's up there, can you get a fire engine through?
No, we wouldn't be able to. That's a, it's easy to move in, it comes on the back of a truck, you drive around it, you don't go.
They'd have to follow the traffic pattern.
Right, and the diverter would just go around, yeah.
So the diverter wouldn't work for you? I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't, there's no way to remove it so that you could get around it or anything?
Not, and not on a response, no. No.
They'd have to go to the same traffic pattern as the community.
Yeah, exactly, some other traffic pattern that would, it would, it would cause a delay in the response over having the street open. And that's the same as the speed humps, that's the same, that's our...
So it's a slower response either way?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I would be comfortable if we, if we gave staff the latitude to try the diverter. I'm fine with turning the restrictions, turn restrictions, obviously, everybody's unhappy with turn restrictions, I think, from every point of view, because it hasn't really solved it. And I would be satisfied if you said, okay, three months, staff, do the diverter. At the end of the three months, analyze whether you want to remove it and do the speed humps, or you want to augment the diverter by adding the speed humps, because I think you're going to have neighborhoods, they're going to, other streets... gonna have neighborhoods, they're gonna, other streets that are gonna have a lot of concern about speeding on their street. And I don't want them to come back and have to go through this whole thing again, and having people out to, close to midnight. And I think that would, they'll know whether, what, what's working or not, and they can report and tell us, but I'd still like to give them the latitude to move ahead with the rest of, of implementation. And, and I would second that motion.
Well, I think you're gonna have to make a motion, the other one apparently died.
No, I, I...
As long as nobody dies, we're good. I would move that we do the diverter for three months, and give staff the latitude to move ahead with speed humps wherever they're needed af, at the end of that three months, and report back to us at three months until, give us an update.
Okay, so that's a combination. Okay. And is there a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I assume that includes the removal of the timelines, same. Okay, we have a...
I'm sorry, just let me get this clear. So then are you saying, then, at the end of three months, staff has, has the ability to remove the, without it coming back to us?
No, they have to report back and say how it works. They won't just remove it.
We'll get a report before anything further is done in three months.
And then we can say, "It seems to be working," so then, forget the rest of it.
Well, if, if the rest of it isn't needed, staff will know. But you've given them the latitude that if it is needed, we don't have to go through an entire huge amount of testimony to, to decide that we can use speed cushions.
And I think importantly, the community's gonna have an opportunity to make an assessment.
Yeah, and they, they will make their own assessment.
I can't, I cannot support speed humps in, in any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
I, I would hope that three months, I know three months would be a long time to be inconvenienced if you hate it immediately, but would hope that people could live with it for three months in order to give us enough time to look at it. And, and to really see, you know, does this work for the whole community? I know you said, you know, people are gonna show up the, the next week and say, "This is horrible." If we, they might. I know you're gonna want to, but, and Scott's going to. But if, if you could bear with it and, and give us, you know, at least that three months, just to, to look at it.
And, and that's one of the reasons I want staff to have the latitude, so that people know if they really hate it, that they'll be able to voice that. And at the end of that three months, either it's working enough, and you need to add the speed humps, or it's just not working at all, and you need to do the entire speed hump project. But they know that there is, the next pieces in the toolbox are there, so that we don't have to go through all that discussion again.
Okay, while we're discussing, can I just throw one more thing out there? Sorry, guys, I know it's late, but in the Bridgeport community, as you drive through there, they have these little islands, and they have little things where you have to slow down to go around them. And, and I'm still not convinced that that shouldn't be in the mix. I, I just cannot, I, I'm told that, "Well, people don't like it, 'cause it, it messes with their parking." But it just seems to me that, that we should have that option in there as well, and I don't understand why we can't. Then that, that would only pertain to bends road, we could get rid of the restrictions, and it would just slow down traffic on that road so much.
Also, speed bumps.
I think, I think we need to handle the motion with a second that we have on the table first.
I don't think there are, in, in, in Bridgeport?
Have a motion, a second, roll call.
Councilmember McLean?
No.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Hi.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
For the, for the purpose of clarification, Mayor, can I have the city clerk read back the direction so that we're all clear on what was actually said?
I'd really like it. At 11:30, let's have staff clear on it.
And, and if it, I'm sure you'll correct me if it's not real clear. Motion by West, second by Ender, to try the diverter for three months, taking out the turn restrictions, evaluating the situation after a three-month period, and then decide if you should go ahead with the speed bumps.
No, that's giving, uh-uh. That isn't what it was, the motion was. I like that one, it, to come back to us before we do those, but...
No, it, it, you had to, reread, and I'll stop you where we need to stop.
Try the diverter for three months, taking out the turn restrictions.
Correct.
Staff will evaluate, bring information back to the council in a report at three months.
Okay, stop. And then, but staff has the latitude to use the speed humps wherever they're necessary throughout the neighborhood.
Is that at three months? Is that during the three-month process or after?
After three months.
After three months.
Yeah, three months. But you'll report at three months on what the diverter's doing and where it's pushing things, and you'll know. You'll also know what taking the turn restrictions out did. But please be patient for the three months, because it will be very helpful. So, thank you all very much for, for being here and for spending the time and staying out till 11:30 at night.
Good.